So I'm going to call to order the Highland Park Board of Education Virtual Special Public Meeting Tonight at 6:30. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has quit notice of this meeting setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. During this meeting, we asked that all members of the public mute themselves unless they are speaking during a public comment period. If necessary, we may mute you ourselves. You may leave your video on or off at your option. If we experience bandwidth problems and believe that limiting video could help, we may turn video off. We will have an opportunity for public comment. If at that time you wish to speak, please raise your blue virtual hand in Zoom and wait for me to call on you. If you cannot raise your virtual hand, or if I miss your virtual hand, please turn on your video camera and raise your real hand. Your Jersey law requires us to inform you that all commenters must behave appropriately in Highland Park. This means no screaming obscenities or inappropriate video displays. In the event of a speaker's inappropriate behavior, they will be muted. So Linda, could we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Morasty?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Roslevich?
Here.
Mr. Woodward?
Here.
Okay, we'll now do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. Okay, so we have an important meeting this evening. And I'm going to give a longer than usual president's report. At our special public meeting tonight, we will take action on the single most important function of the Board of Education, ensuring the district has a strong and capable superintendent of schools. I'd like to recognize our attorney Jonathan Bush. He's here to support the board and community with his expertise on this important occasion. I'd like to thank Jonathan for his guidance and support as we have moved through this change of leadership. I'd first like to talk about tonight's agenda. We will vote on accepting Dr. Scott Taylor's resignation tonight, effective June 30, 2021. We will vote on appointing Dr. Christina Nikosia as Acting Superintendent of Schools, effective July 1, 2021, and ending on June 30, 2022. We are also voting on promoting Michelle Rodriguez, currently our Supervisor of Curriculum to Director of Curriculum, effective May 21, 2021. That's tomorrow, of course. Assuming the board votes to appoint Dr. Nikosia, since she cannot perform both her duties as superintendent and her current responsibilities as Director of STEM Curriculum, we plan to hire a supervisor of STEM curriculum as soon as possible. The district will then have a superintendent, a director of curriculum, and a supervisor of curriculum, exactly as we have had for the past several years. A few words about the promotion of Ms. Rodriguez first. Dr. Taylor and the Board Personnel Committee and the Board Leadership talked about this promotion months ago, before we even knew of Scott's departure, based on her excellent work as supervisor of curriculum. In the director position, she will be more involved with strategic curriculum planning, and we believe this is an enormous benefit to the district. As it turns out, having Michelle in a director position is excellent timing, given Christina's promotion. Next, I'd like to present the rationale for appointing acting superintendent as opposed to rushing to hire a superintendent. In a few words, five weeks is not nearly enough time to conduct a proper search for district leader, necessitating our hire of the acting superintendent. Acting superintendents can be promoted from within. And also various organizations like the New Jersey School Boards Association maintain lists of potential acting superintendents. Since there are several well-qualified administrators in the district who know the staff, the administration, have experience with the community, and also have experience with our students, an inside candidate is an excellent choice. This will give us the continuity and progress that only an inside candidate can offer. It means we can hit the ground running, not waiting for someone we don't know and who does not know the district to come up to speed over many months. Dr. Christina Nikosia has been in Highland Park for about five years. She has experience working within her curriculum role as a district leader. She's worked with many teachers, staff, and administrators. She's worked with students and is well aware of the important initiatives the district has done. In fact, she's managed many of them, you'll hear in a moment, and has planned for the future and what our plans are for the future. After personnel committee meetings with the board leadership, the job was offered to Christina. I'll say a few more words about Dr. Nikosia in a few minutes. As a new superintendent, Christina has to get approval from the Executive County Superintendent, has to go through mentoring, and the board is planning, assuming Christina is approved this evening, the board will offer other opportunities for mentoring as the months go by. So one last point about planning. At future meetings, the board will discuss hiring a private search firm to conduct a thorough superintendent search. That will include community input throughout the search process. The goal will be to appoint a superintendent to start on July 1, 2022, with the usual multi-year contract. Now, I'd like to say a few words about Dr. Scott Taylor. Scott came to Highland Park in October of 2015, when the district was reeling. Scott established positive relations with the staff, with students, with the Highland Park Education Association, our union, and with the board. When I joined the board in February of 2016, I could already see the changes. Soon after he started, Scott initiated a strategic plan for the district, including educators from the district, board members, community members, and we have achieved most of the goals of that initial strategic plan over the next years. In conjunction with the HPEA and Rutgers University, he formed the central leadership team to work collaboratively on serious initiatives. But most important, if you want to know what makes Scott Taylor tick, is his commitment to the children and to the staff. His decisions were always framed from this perspective, and I salute him for this. So I'd like personally and for the board to wish him well in his new position in Union Township, and I want to thank Scott for all of the work he's done here, from my heart.
Thank you, Mark.
So Scott, I know you wanted to say a few words. Let's, I know you wanted to say a few words. You have the floor now.
Yes, so, you know, obviously, when somebody leaves an institution after having spent almost six years, that person thinks a lot about the good, the bad, the ugly. We just meet that person. You know, there's been some ugly, there's been some bad, but there's been a lot of good. I think there's so many amazing things that the district did over the last six years, but if I had to sum up what I'm most proud of, it is that Highland Park once again became what it was back in the day, and that is a premier school district, very well respected by people around the state. Of course, the board had a lot to do with that as well. I think the alignment of the board, the district's leadership team, and the teachers' union, just all being and working in synergy, really helped push the reputation along for us. And obviously, nothing happens in a school district to make it what it is if the people are high quality, and that's probably another aspect of my legacy that I hope continues beyond, and that is that we only work with the best teachers, support staff, and leadership team, and certificate faculty that are out there. Mediocrity cannot be accepted. Love for kids has to be A number one, and if it doesn't work out, then we have to find that person out there who is like that. And so it's with that that I am feeling so confident in passing the torch to somebody who I've groomed somewhat for this position. I'll be very frank with the community, that's Christina Nikosia. We hired Dr. Nikosia, I think, my second year here, and she became a rock star pretty quickly among not only the staff and faculty, but the community as well, the parents, guardians got to know her. She's a rare leader who combines amazing skill sets, collegiality, with care and nurturing, and a work ethic that's unparalleled. And so you put all that together, and I think we're going to be in just great shape for at least this year, if not beyond. So thank you, Mark, and the board. We had a really good run, and it's going to keep running. I have to thank once more the board for not only supporting all of the things that we were doing the last six years, but also having the reasonable mindset to recognize that we want to keep the good stuff going and to bring somebody from inside to serve as the acting superintendent. That says a lot about what the board is willing to do for the district, and that is maintain continuity, keep doing the good stuff that's already being done good. So thank you, Mark, for that.
Scott, thank you very much. Really appreciate it hearing this. So next, I'd like to introduce Dr. Christina Nikosia. She has personally managed the rewriting of STEM curriculum, managed professional development for our STEM teachers in all of our schools, managed the provisioning of hundreds of Chromebooks, and now probably thousands of Chromebooks, for use by our students about 18 months before the pandemic, so that the majority of the district's students had computers when we went to remote learning, and managed the professional development of our teachers on using those computers remotely as the pandemic began. She also managed the Math 6+ program planning, which was unfortunately delayed by the pandemic. We're going to get going again. In addition, she has revamped the IT department, assisted the business office as we moved some of our internal processes to new systems. She's done this with strong leadership, with intellectual curiosity, and the board has confidence that she will lead the district from the pandemic to normalcy with the same success and give the district continuity and give us progress. I also know that Christina would like to say a few words. So Christina, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Krieger. First, I want to thank Dr. Taylor for his hard work and dedication to the students, staff, and community. I'm going to get a little choked up, but I want to say to you, Scott, that he has an unwavering commitment to put students first, and that's something that is truly inspiring and that I will take with me forever as well. I'm honored and deeply appreciative of the faith the Board of Education has placed in me, and I'm fully aware of its gravity and weight. I'm going to do my best every day to meet and exceed your expectations. I'm proud to have served the Highland Park Public School District as your STEM supervisor and Director of Curriculum and Instruction. This is truly an amazing district, and I'm gratified to be given the opportunity to guide its continued success while steering it towards new areas of growth in close partnership with its students, faculty, and parents. So thank you very much.
Christina, thank you. So now I'd like to open the meeting for board questions, comments. So if you have something you'd like to add, or a question you have, or really anything, board members, just raise your hand, and I'll call on you. I'll try to get the order right. Chris, is that your hand or an applause?
I think it's my, I think it's my hand.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, so I'd just like to say a couple words about Dr. Taylor's leadership. You know, two things in my mind really come to mind right away. The first is his leadership in social emotional learning, and there are many examples that, you know, we could give of how he's moved the district forward and that. But I just want to mention, in particular, how he really championed the teen center. And, you know, last year, when the state was proposing that funds for the teen center would be cut, he was one of the leaders statewide, really, in getting that funding restored. And not only that, but really reassuring the staff there that we really support them and value what they do. And I think all of the staff and community really appreciated that. The second thing that I wanted to mention is just the community may not realize what enormous amount of work and really one of the most hardworking and accessible superintendents in this state. To give one example of that, I mean, he was always accessible over the weekend, to the point that I really tried to stop emailing him on Sundays because I knew he would email me back within 15 minutes, and I just thought that wasn't really, you know, that our staff really needed a break, including Dr. Taylor. So thank you for all your hard work, Scott.
Thank you.
Chris, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Oh, Darcy, almost missed you, Darcy. Take the floor, please.
Well, I almost didn't raise my hands because I don't know, I don't even know where to start, Scott. I don't know where to start. You know, when Scott first came into the district, he really walked into a heck of a situation where there'd been just an incredible amount of turmoil and strife, and it was tricky, like there were tricky waters to navigate for a number of years, and it really didn't take long of, you know, Scott and the board, you know, as he so rightly said in his remarks, and the union working together, which is, you know, from the very beginning was of Scott's superintendency, was really the push and the drive was to get everybody on the same page, moving in the same direction. And, you know, I think that's really Scott's lasting legacy, is to be able to guide the district through those really, really difficult years and come in and just get everybody. We didn't always agree on everything, because no one ever does in any kind of relationship, but at least moving in the same direction and having the respect for each other to be able to disagree and to be able to do so respectfully, and then always know that from everyone's position at whatever table we were sitting at, everyone's intentions were to make the district as successful as possible. And the only way to do that is by working together. So, you know, I've sat around many a table over the years as well with Dr. Nikosia, and I have every, every confidence that she will continue that legacy of everyone working together with a strong focus on the students and the staff, and she's just, she's a smart lady. We're really lucky. We're really, really, really lucky. I mean, like, uber competent doesn't even begin to cover it. So very excited for you, Christina, and really, really, really looking forward to the next year.
Mark, I have to say something.
Love to you in everything, and thank you for everything.
Scott?
Yeah, so, Darcy, I should know, you've been such an influence on my professional life. I remember the very, and just to prove it to you, besides all the ways that I grew thanks to your input, I still have in my head, maybe I was traumatized by it, I don't know, but I still have it in my head, like, the day I was approved, the next night, I think you took me out for coffee at Starbucks in North Brunswick and sat down, because you were not the board president at the time, and laid it all out. And I remember you saying, listening is really important, and I took that to heart. I just loved the way our relationship evolved, personally and professionally. I'm so glad that you're still on the board and that we had a chance to keep that relationship alive. Thank you.
My pleasure.
I'd say amen to all of that. And I feel, I didn't even say this, and this is not prepared, but the relationship we have with the HPEA and the HPAA Administrators Association is just the best of anyone in any district and union in the state. I mean, we just settled a contract after two, two and a half meetings with our teachers' union, and that's kind of like unheard of, and we did it because there's such a good relationship. And it's the board too, but Scott has led us to that. So again, Scott, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So, any other board members? Ann?
I don't think I have anything eloquent to add. Just thank you, Scott, for quite a ride, and Christina, welcome. We're delighted to have you. And Michelle, congratulations. Can't wait to work with you.
Thank you, Ann. So, Michelle, Michelle McFadden-Dinacola?
Hi. I wanted to just quickly say welcome to Christina and her new role. I'm very excited. I know that we've worked curriculum-wise together for a while, and I have every confidence that you're going to be a wonderful superintendent. Same for Michelle Rodriguez. I feel like we are in great hands with you as well. And Scott, I am happy that you are moving towards further success, but we'll miss you, and we really wish you well, not just from, you know, the standpoint of someone that's worked with you and disagreed with you, worked through it, but also from the perspective of a parent. Because that time that we all lived through when Rob, Ann, and I joined the board was very difficult on my family. So from a personal perspective, I thank you for all of the peace that you restored in the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else? Oh, Monique?
Yeah, I kind of feel like I need to say something, and we need to go down the line here at this point, but I'm feeling the same way. Thank you, Scott, for your service and leadership. And I do want to acknowledge that, as I feel like sometimes I pushed you a lot, and it was Equity and Excellence and Curriculum Committee meetings and all of the email exchanges that we've had in terms of research and looking for, you know, ways to continually improve what we do and center the social, emotional, and equity needs of our students, but you hung, you kind of were right there along with us step by step, and I really appreciate that, just the kind of give and take, the willingness to, you know, consider all sides and ultimately always find a way to land on the side of doing what's in the best interest of, you know, all of our students academically, socially, emotionally, and certainly in terms of through an equity lens, which you have acknowledged that's an area that you have grown into, and we appreciate, I know I appreciate you. I wouldn't say we, I'm not going to speak for others, but I do know in terms of Equity and Excellence that there's been a real appreciation for your willingness to walk that, you know, walk, not only talk it, but walk it. And then just again to Christina and Michelle, huge congratulations, and look forward to working with you in these new roles in this coming school year.
Thanks, Monique.
Monique, thank you. Rob?
I wasn't, I wasn't planning to speak, and I have nothing prepared, but I just want to echo the words of my colleagues here on the board in terms of Scott and Christina and Michelle, who I know I'll get to know you in the months and years ahead. I think, Scott, in terms of your relationship with the student body, that's something that the kids in this district are always going to have a very special memory of you visiting the classrooms, not just one time, you know, not just to make an appearance, but regularly to make an impact on the kids. And I think that's been expressed before, but it's really quite special. I don't think that, I think that it's special and it's unusual, and it's appreciated. And of course, we wish you the best in the future, I mean, blah, 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 all of the good stuff that we've all said. And, you know, we have great confidence in our new appointees and looking forward to being together with them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I don't see any other hands up, so I'm going to go to the public comment portion. So, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board Policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Just any public who wants to speak, please raise your hand, give your name and your address, and I will give you the floor. I think somebody is not muted.
I took care of that.
Oh, you did, thank you.
Yeah, Christina, I hope you know how to work the Zoom thing. I'm kidding. You know it better than I do.
Well, I'm good backup. I know how to do it too. All right. So I do not see any hands. So I think we will move to the board action items. So, Ann, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you are the Vice President and Personnel Chair. Would you like to move them, please?
You know, Mark, I would actually love to move them, but I came running from work. I don't have the agenda in front of me.
I'm sorry, I didn't warn you. My planning went awry.
Let me just say, if I had the agenda, I would do it with joy in my voice.
No problem. So I'll move these. So item number one is the acceptance of the resignation of the superintendent. I move, and we've had a chance to comment, if any board member wants to say anything now, I am certainly willing to talk about it. Okay, seeing none, I move that the Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Dr. Scott Taylor, Superintendent, effective June 30, 2021. Do I have a second?
Seconds?
Thank you. Linda, could we have the roll?
Ms. Morasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Sorry.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, the second item is the approval of the acting superintendent. So we need to make a small change here. The Executive County Superintendent has all the paperwork for approval. So according to state law and our policy 1620, the county executive superintendent or the executive county superintendent has to approve any administrative hire. We've gotten him the papers. It turns out he also has to send a copy down to Trenton for their approval, and it didn't make it in time. It will make it, Jonathan, you've told me, in the next day or two.
Yeah, if I can, just thank you, Mark, and hello, everyone. I just, you know, I just got off the phone with Kyle Anderson, the County Superintendent, about, you know, 10 or 15 minutes before your meeting. The contract is fine, is not any issue at all. There's just one administrative aspect to this because of Dr. Nikosia's, you know, because of Dr. Nikosia's, um, you know, certification. The commissioner has to sign off, the Commission of Education has to sign off on allowing her to, um, you know, practice, uh, being superintendent on a provisional basis. So that's just a sign off, and, you know, the department is still operating at its, um, you know, capacity. So, so we'll get that, we expect very, very soon. So there's no actual holdup, it's just bureaucracy, and that's fine, and, um, and we're looking forward to getting this done in the next couple of days.
Jonathan, thank you. So, um, I'd like to propose, with, with, with that objection, I hope, um, to add to the motion, where it says effective July first, two thousand and twenty-one through June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, subject to the, uh, to approval by the Executive County Superintendent. So we'll be approving, um, uh, Christina, uh, uh, subject to the approval of the Executive County Superintendent. Um, so I'm going to make that motion now. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the appointment of Christina Nikosia as acting superintendent at one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars per year, effective July first, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, subject to the approval of the Executive County Superintendent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, Linda, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Marusty?
Yes, with congratulations.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes, indeed.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes, I look forward to working with you. Congratulations.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
And our third motion this evening is approval of Director of Curriculum and Instruction. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the appointment of Michelle Rodriguez as Director of Curriculum and Instruction at Step One, Director, on the Current Administrator Guide at a hundred thousand dollars per year, effective May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and at Step Two, on the New Administrator Guide, at a hundred seven thousand, two hundred dollars per year, effective July first, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, do I have, um, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, Linda, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Marusty?
Yes, also with congratulations.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes, also congratulations. I look forward to meeting you and working with you in the future.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Um, I just want to say one last word. Great congratulations to Christina and Michelle. You guys will do great. And we'll be talking very, very soon. So congratulations and thank you, everyone. So, um, with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, see you all soon.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you for having me, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.